Good evening and welcome to the March 16, 2022 regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Present.
Vreeman.
Present.
Peters. Corbin. Coronado. Arnshorst.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting the way we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening by our city manager Keith Van Beek, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you'd like.
Thank you, and join me in prayer if you are so inclined. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the warmer weather and the promise of spring. We ask for your blessing this evening on the deliberations of the city and the mayor and council as they serve the best interests of the city. We also pray for protection over those that serve in the city in so many different ways, in many different, in the hospitals, in our long care facilities, our police and fire. And we also pray for those suffering in Ukraine. It's in your name that we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine, and they'll be voted on in one motion with one vote, unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda items for us?
For A, absences excused. For B, approval of minutes. March 2, regular meeting. March 9, 2022, study session. For C, Osev Office. For D, Planning Commission. Recommendation to accept the proposed rezoning of West 13 West 4th Street for first reading with final adoption for April 13, 2022. For E, Planning Commission. Recommendation to accept the proposed rezoning of 313 Country Club Road and a portion of 1269 East 16th Street for first reading with final adoption, April 13, 2022. For F, City Clerk, claim filed against the city. For G, City Clerk, annual liquor license renewals. For H, City Clerk, Tool Time Festival Approval 2022 Agreement. For I, Transportation Services. Approved proposed project budget for the Pine Avenue Reconstruction Project. For J, Transportation Services. Accept stormwater easement from 105 Country Club Road in support of the Country Club Reconstruction Project. For K, Transportation Services. 2022-23 road salt purchase. For M, Purchasing. Approved purchase of four vehicles for the Police Department. For N, Management Administrative Services. Downtown Group, Downtown Development Authority, adopt bylaws. For O, Management and Administrative Services. Revocable License Agreement, awning, 447 Washington Avenue. For P, Management and Administrative Services. Revocable License Agreement, projecting sign, 14 East 8th Street. For Q, Management Administrative Services. Downtown Group, approved DEI consulting agreement with the Web Advisory Group. For R, Management Administrative Services. Downtown Group, Civic Center Place, purchase of AV equipment.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any member of the audience that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda? Yes, would you please come forward? Would you state your name and your municipality for the record, and which item you would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Sure. I'm Kim Kelly-Lafada, and I live in Ward 1 at 1220 Hearthstone Court. And I would like to have item 4E removed from the agenda, please.
All right, that's item 4E, and that will be then placed in 12B2, 12B2, in the regular agenda. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just making some notes here. Anyone else from the audience that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mr. Corbin.
Item 4Q on the consent agenda moved to the regular agenda.
All right.
And that would be placed at 12E 6.8.
Great, 12E 6.8. Any other member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda items?
Move we approve the consent agenda with the modifications made.
Moved by Aaron Source, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And while we're on the item of the agenda, any other changes to the agenda that a council member may desire to make?
Yes, Your Honor. Item 12, item 12 4.1 to be removed from the agenda.
12E 4.1?
Excuse me, 12E 4.1.
Yep, we have a motion on the floor to remove item 12E 4.1 from the agenda. Is there support?
Support.
Support. Moved by Corbin, support by Aaron Source. Let's do a roll call vote on this. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the opportunity for members of the public to speak to council during each and every one of our regular meetings and also during our study sessions. We limit that time to five minutes per person. We would ask that you come up to the podium, state your name and the municipality in which you live for the record. This is one-way communication. This is the opportunity for you to speak to us. We do not answer questions at this time. We don't engage in debate at this time. And we do ask, A, that you speak into the microphone, because the meeting is being broadcast, and that's the only way that people at home can hear you, and also that you address all of your comments directly to council. Having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. Please come forward. And one other bit of information, there are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that. So with that being said, would you please state your name and your municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Mercedes Watts, and I live in Georgetown Township. I just wanted to come up here. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to come up here and introduce myself. Like I said, my name is Mercedes Watts, and I want to run for the new judgeship that was recently signed into law for Ottawa County. This would be a circuit court position. It was created in response to the backlog caused by COVID. It is a family law position, which is my specialty. I am a Grand Valley alum. I went to Law School of DePaul Law in Chicago. Upon graduating from law school, I opened my own firm where I practiced primarily family law. After that, I worked for Legal Services, where I practiced family and landlord tenant law. After that, I was a prosecutor, where I practiced family law and criminal law. And I currently work as a public defender for Ottawa County. I want to be a judge, because I believe I can help the most people as a judge. I believe judges have a huge impact on people's lives. I am a mother and a wife, so I know what families need, and I understand the challenges of having a family, and I've seen what our justice system does to families. I am in the process of gathering signatures just to get onto the ballot to be voted on, and I would like your help with that. If anyone is willing to sign my petition to help me just to get onto the ballot, I would greatly appreciate it, and if you could just find me or my husband after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, I do want to make a point of, even though we don't have any this evening, under item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to allowing the opportunity for people to speak at the meetings in person, we also have an email address where you can send comments to council. Those are gathered between the meetings and reviewed by council, and then accepted into the record at our regular meetings. We don't read them out loud at the meetings, but we do accept them into the official record. And that email address is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Next item on the agenda is, would be item 12B2. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. So this is the item that was pulled off the consent agenda. And just kind of a procedural thing, so everyone knows what's happening this evening. There was one other rezoning that typically they do go on the consent agenda. It's perfectly fine that it was pulled off. What's before you this evening is a first reading, and the only action that council could take tonight is to advance it to a second reading. Any ordinance that's adopted by the city under city charter requires a first reading and then a second reading. So council would not be able to take any vote on the ultimate matter before you tonight. The only thing would be to advance it to the second reading. So just procedurally, so everyone understands that that's the process that we go through. So there's understanding of that. Senior Planner Steve Peterson is here. He made the presentation and has worked on that matter to Planning Commission. And Steve is prepared to give you, I think, a brief context of what is ultimately before you for the next meeting, so that as there's comments, at least, council, if you haven't seen all the information, you kind of know contextually what this matters about. And Steve, there are some slides here, so tell me when to advance or go back or anything like that. You can go ahead and tell me to do that. So Steve, please come forward, and then we'll have the public hearing after that.
Sure. Thank you, Keith. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, maybe just... Maybe that, maybe that to back up to that overall, yeah, maybe that one should work. So, yeah, what you're going to be asked to take action on is the Planning Commission recommendation to rezone a portion of 1269 East 16th Street and 313 Country Club to accommodate a new apartment project. This is the developer that has done the project just down the street, Shoreline Flats. So I guess we're calling this Shoreline Flats Phase 2. Thank you. And so as I mentioned, there's really two properties that are involved in the rezoning. The small piece of property, 313 Country Club, is really just a small 66-foot-wide piece that provides access to the northern piece of 1269 East 16th Street. 1269 East 16th Street is a piece of property. It's about 22 acres. It is already split-zoned, so the northern third of it is in the LDR zoning district. The southern two-thirds is in the HDR zoning district. So really, the request is part of the rezoning, part of the development is the rezoning, and the proposal is to rezone that small piece of Country Club and then to essentially raise, to move the HDR line, zoning line, north about 170 feet. So the impact, the result of that would be to essentially allow the developer to have a second point of access, so that they would have access out to both Country Club and to East 16th Street. Again, as a result of the rezoning, there is still some property left in the LDR zone, so it's a little bit hard, I know, to pick up on this scale of the map. But you look closely, you kind of see what is in effect. The northern four acres of the piece of property would remain in the LDR zone. So that's a long, convoluted way to say that basically the request is just to move that zoning line north about 170 feet to give them access to Country Club. The development itself is about 239, is 239 apartments. One of the reasons for the second access is the fire code requires a second point of access once you reach 200 units. From a planning and engineering, transportation perspective, we also look at having the two points of access as a positive thing, to be able to provide some connectivity and dispersed traffic as well. So that's what really, the action that is going to be before you. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of that. They recommended approval by a vote of four to three. So there was a lot of discussion and some debate about that. But that's a recommendation to you for the rezoning. They did take some action on the site plan itself and move to approve the site plan by a vote of five to two, with, I guess, what I would call maybe standard conditions of the site plan in addition to the requirement or the condition that the rezoning would have to be approved. So if the rezoning wasn't approved, obviously, the site plan as it sits could not be approved. So that's a short version of what you're going to be taking action on.
Questions from council members?
Yes. So why was the vote, what was the debate? I mean, what, the pros and cons of the debate?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. I think there was a lot of discussion about both the rezoning and the site plan, so maybe to separate them. I think there was some feeling that the where, when we, when we rezoned that line as it sits today, with where that HDR line sits today when we did all of the Udo amendments, I think there was some feeling that a lot of this discussion was had, and that that was the extent of where that zoning line, the limit of where that zoning line should be, and that it really wasn't intended to go a little further north. I think that was, you know, the comments about the people who didn't want it to expand. In terms of the site plan, I guess I'll add, I think a lot of the comments that we got from the neighborhood were probably just concerned about additional apartments in the area. So, and then the other comments were probably more site plan-related. And I would describe the majority of those concerns were probably related to stormwater. There was some conversation, some pictures from some neighbors that had some evidence of some existing water issues along their backyard as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Dave?
The group that's proposing this project, they own all of this property?
They do.
Okay. So if this rezoning were approved, it would leave that one little section, as you say, LDR. And did I read correctly that they were proposing some sort of berm or something on that property?
Yep, you picked up on that. Yeah, they proposed what essentially is about a 12-to-15-foot-tall berm that would be landscaped in addition to deed restricting that area, so it wouldn't be developed. So it would be LDR, but it would be undevelopable.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Vreeman?
And I'm just questioning the drainage concerns. Do you feel like those have been addressed? That there is a good, a solid plan in place to make that happen well?
I do, and I know I talked to our engineer about that even after the meeting, and he's very comfortable with the plans that have been developed at this point. So they still need to get, you know, their stormwater permit, sort of the final action with that, but very comfortable with the stormwater design of the project.
Can I ask one more question? Yeah, I think I got Quincy, Quincy? Quincy, and then Nikki, and then Dave. That microphone, please?
Off what Tim was saying, if it finds out that that drain does not work accordingly, is there any recourse?
Well, they do have to get that stormwater permit from our engineer. And so that's probably a better question for, for those folks to find out what they do if something isn't meeting their approved plans.
Yeah, Keith? Just a kind of a point of order and reminder procedurally again, which seems weird, right? But again, before you tonight, taking comment, I think, is great. Having a little bit of context before you take that comment is great. Reminder, though, and it's tempting sometimes, and it's difficult to keep them separate, but the rezoning that is ultimately before you next time to either say, do you approve or not approve of the recommendation from the Planning Commission, really needs to stand on its own merits and really can't be informed with what the site plan would say would go in there. And we all know that it's difficult to keep those separated, and you're like, well, I'd like to know. But just a reminder procedurally before you, and I'm sure our city attorney and our senior planner would remind, and probably Steve was going to do that, but just a reminder, the rezoning stands before you as a standalone item and really shouldn't be informed by site plan considerations that then would go through a separate process depending on what you all decide on the rezoning.
Nikki, and then Dave.
So if this wasn't rezoned, would the developer only be able to build 200 units? Is that what?
So again, sort of that second access really does kick in with the 200. So, and certainly, if that were to be the case, you could have a, you could keep your apartment project, if you will, in the HDR, and then you could still have some sort of development in the LDR. So it's still possible you might be over 200, but you might just have this sort of combination. And the developer did walk the Planning Commission through sort of some iterations of plans like that. So I guess I just wouldn't want you to think that if it wasn't approved, that you, there would never be more than 200. There still could be.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, to the matter of whether or not we would approve this rezoning and not being privy to the Planning Commission's deliberations or their thought processes necessarily, I'm assuming that there is a reason that part of this was zoned HDR and part of it was originally a re-zoned LDR. Do you have any insight as to what the rationale was? Why not make it all HDR?
Right.
Or all the other?
It looked like, from what I found, when we were doing Udo, that we did move that line north and essentially just lined it up with the existing HDR, which the church piece of property immediately to the east sort of had a HDR line that was a little bit further north, and we simply kind of squared it off with that. And that still allowed the buffer of the LDR property to be there. That's essentially what I found as, you know, as why we are where we're at today.
And can I ask one more? Sure, a follow-up. In the Planning Commission's deliberations, did they talk about, I'm sure they must have talked about how this would affect the neighborhood, but is there consensus that this would represent a good balance of housing mixes in that close proximity to each other?
Well, again, very close vote, so I think you had probably four people that probably agreed with that and maybe three that didn't.
Good answer, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Jake?
I'm not on the Planning Commission either, and I, we're not, I don't think, I don't know who's in the room for this reason, and they didn't choose to come up and speak when they had a chance, but can you?
We're still, we're going to give them that opportunity, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I just want to hear rationale for, the people that live there, I'd like to hear what they're thinking. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I just have a couple of comments I want to, I want to make in this, in this regard for people in the, in the room, both here in the dais and in the audience. We are, this, the vote, any vote we take today is not voting on the rezoning. It is, we are voting to put it on first reading. Any decision on rezoning would be at a subsequent meeting. And that's kind of an odd procedural thing that we do, and I'm going to let the city attorney correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong in my historical understanding of parliamentary procedure, but these rules go back decades and decades to when it wasn't nearly as convenient or easy to communicate information to folks. And so this was an opportunity to essentially post the language up so that, that people could start reviewing it and start discussing it and start thinking about it, and may not have had the opportunity prior to that, which is why it was put on first reading of, hey, here it is, to take a look at it. And so that's one of the reasons why we do this in, in two steps. And want to make sure that, that everybody's very clear on that. Any, any vote that this body takes tonight is not to rezone. It is frankly merely to start talking about this issue. And you may be thinking to yourself, you guys have been talking about this issue for the last 10 minutes. We have, and that's kind of unusual. Normally, these are done on the consent agenda and just kind of put there from a procedural standpoint. But that's, I just want to make sure that that was clear for everybody. So. Any other questions for staff members? All right, thank you, Steve. I will now open a public hearing in regard to this item. Rules are very similar to what they are in public comment. Each person has the opportunity to speak one time. We do limit that to five minutes. There are still the three lights on the dais. We do not engage in discussion. We do not answer questions at this point. This is an opportunity for you to be able to let us know what you're thinking about this particular item. And again, please speak into the microphone, because it's being recorded. There are folks at home that would want to hear what you have to say, and if you're not speaking into the microphone, they can't hear you. And again, all comments should be addressed to council, and we ask that you state your name and your municipality for the record. Having said that, anyone who would like to speak in regard to this particular item, please come forward. Yes, and again, because folks at home may not have been watching the previous part of the meeting, would you state your name and your municipality for the record, please?
I'm Kim Kelly-Lafada. I live in the first ward, and my address is 1220 Hearthstone Court. I am one of the abutting neighbors to the north of this piece of property. And in fact, if you look at the plan that's before you, you can kind of see where the berm has been drawn in, and there's kind of a little notch in it to the west. That notch is right outside my back fence. And that is a constant wet area. We call it the pond jokingly. And it is a piece of wetland that cannot be developed. And so the berm would be skirting around that. My main concern, besides having a berm and lights and apartments there, which I think we all have in the neighborhood, is that once you trap that water between the berm and my backyard, the water's going to come closer. It already approaches my deck when the snow melts, when it rains. We have gone through, I've lived there 26 years. We've gone through several conversations with the city over the years. Our last flood was in 2009. We've since put drain tile in, but it still approaches my deck every time we have a hard rain or the snow melts. I haven't seen anything yet that assures me that it won't start pouring into my basement again, and that is a large concern. There are three or four houses that always have wet problems in the backyard, for sure. All of the houses abutting along there have a problem. And I'm not sure that the berm is going to satisfactorily take care of making that an additional problem for us. I know that in my past, that we spoke to Unima Excavating, came up with a plan, and it wasn't accepted by the city. The previous owners of that property were also approached and said, could you do something to help drain this? They didn't want anything to do with that at the time either. So I have been living for 26 years, hoping, putting drain tile in, doing other things, trying to landscape, so this wouldn't happen. My biggest concern truly is, is that the construction's going to start, and I am going to flood every time it rains, every time the snow melts, or every time someone sneezes in the backyard, frankly. And so that, that is my biggest concern. And so that is my biggest concern on this development, besides the fact, like I said, I'm sure you'll hear from other neighbors that are worried about the lights and the apartments and what's going to happen. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Corbin?
Honor, just so note that Councilman Coronado has arrived at 6:20 PM for the record.
Great. Thank you. Welcome, Belinda. Does anyone else like to address counsel in regard to this item? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, I'm Sue Brookhouse. I live at 1247 Hearthstone Court. I think my municipality is the First Ward. I also live on that same street where the apartments will abut. We have several apartments in Holland Heights already and have for 30 years. That in of itself is fine, but we live in a very precarious neighborhood as far as lots and lots of people living in the Heights, and I'm just asking that we don't rezone anything that is low density into high density because we already have a ton of high-density areas in the Holland Heights area with Abbey Court, Ridgeland Heights, lots and lots of The other thing that I would like to address is the lighting issue. If you look at the first phase of the same development on 16th Street, the lights are very bright, they shine extremely brightly into all the neighboring areas. I'm very concerned about that. We have a very, very quiet neighborhood, very quiet street. I'm concerned with excess cars coming in and out, excess noise, excess lights, and then the high density concerns me very much as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel in regard to this item? And would you please state your name and municipality, in other words, the city that you live in? It's not only hard to say, sometimes it's hard to understand, so yes.
My name is Kirsten Doolittle, and I live at 1252 Hearthstone Court, and I'm not sure...
Are you a resident of the city of Holland?
I am. I pay taxes.
That's what we're going for here.
I'm telling you, I pay my taxes. So my concern is, when we met a week ago, there was a slide that showed all the apartments that Sue just referenced, Stratford Way, Abbey Court, all those areas, and it looked like pepper, right? So I understand the high-density area from 16th Street going north, but the strip of property that is low-density, my concern is that just, that peppering will continue, and we're abutting up to that, right? The people that you've heard from, we built our house 30 years ago, yeah, 30 years ago, as did Sue, as did the former person, and, you know, we just want to keep it that small, little quaint area, it's very affordable, and we're just concerned about lighting, noise, traffic, and people say, not in my backyard. Well, it is in our backyard, so that's why we're here today, to get you to look at, what are we talking about? What does that look like? The berm with the water, that will be a problem. I'm sorry to say, it's going to be a pretty thing, but the drainage issue needs to be corrected, it's been there since we built 30 years ago. Kurt Saw from Hearthstone Court built our development, and that was a problem early on, we all live with it, but I think this is going to amplify that. So I just ask you to really look at the low-density area. I understand the other is high, and I get that. 200 units, I think the guy can walk away and put money in his back pocket, but the area behind us, I don't think that's really going to matter. At the end of the day, he probably will sell that piece to somebody who will develop it into single housing units, and that's what would be a nice thing for us. So just please can, put yourself in our shoes and what this looks like for us, and would, you know, I get, we need more housing, I read all about it, I'm very up on those things, but to switch from low to high right now with what's happening to the south of us with that piece of property, I think there's planning going on right there with what he's intending to do, so please take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel in regard to this item? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is JR Kendall, I'm from Indianapolis, Indiana. I am the developer of the project. Just, I wanted to address a couple of things. The, this site plan is really an evolution that's been going on for a year. When I started out, we started out with a plan that, at the next meeting, I can go through in more detail with my slideshow, but we started out with about 27 rental houses on the LDR property with about 200 units on the HDR property. As we, we got through our last spring, we got our wetlands evaluation from our consultant and submitted plans to Eagle, we got comments back, and it was, it was apparent that due to the wetlands on the property that we were going to have to reduce the number of units. At the same time, I also, we were planning to put the second entrance off on the Country Club Road. Around that same time, I got word from the city attorney that we would need to rezone that small piece of property for that entrance since it would be servicing the HDR property. So those two factors combined, I decided, well, if we have to go through a rezoning process instead of, since we're going to be rezoning this small strip, that we could move these buildings that are touching wetlands and move them up into the HDR or into the LDR portion. The current plan is, I will say, it's a compromise for a developer. When we buy a piece of property, we're obviously looking to get the maximum economic benefit out of the property that we can. I had the neighborhood workshop on November 30th, and at that meeting, I presented this plan but with three-story buildings on the LDR portion. I presented the plan as the berm area and the buffer that we're leaving between the neighborhood and us is intended to soften the impact on those homes. At that meeting, it became, it was pretty apparent that there was, you know, opposition to the height of the buildings and the lighting and so on. At that meeting, I agreed that we could reduce those buildings to two stories, we still get the number of units that we would like to see, and then we will construct this berm that would provide, you know, a visual boundary. So this buffer zone that we're allowing, that was my offer to compromise, that we're not going to try to develop this whole property and get right in your backyards. There's also a wetlands property, wetlands that's in between our buildings to the west that is really a buffer, a wooded buffer between us and the residents on Country Club Road. The drainage issue, in our grading plan, there's a note on the plan that was submitted to the plan commission and to you, that currently there's a yard drain in one of the neighbor's yards. It accepts over six acres of water right now, and with our plan, we will have a drainage swale that runs behind the berm, carries the water towards that, towards that yard drain, but it will also reduce by 50% the amount of water that's flowing towards that yard drain from our property. The, so the three acres that's being rezoned, that's all coming into our storm system and going into our pond and will no longer be flowing into that, into that yard drain, so we expect the drainage situation to be improved. Other than that, the lighting, we've submitted a photometric plan, we will be putting extra shields on all of our lighting that's, that could possibly get off of our property so that all the lighting is contained downwards, and these are new lights compared to the lights that are on our, on our current project. We also conducted a traffic study that, it called for a center turn lane along 16th Street, and we're working with the city to come up with a plan that would extend that center turn lane all the way to Quarterline Road. Other than that, those are the basic points I wanted to make, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel in regard to this item? Yes, sir, would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Lauren Holcomb, and I live at 1193 Wellington Road here in Holland, Michigan, in Holland Heights. I'd like to echo what the young other lady said about the water. It's been a problem. I've lived there 32 years, so I'm ahead of them. There's always been a water problem in that area. We live on a hill, water runs downhill, and the gentleman that just spoke, Mr. Kendall, he can talk about diverting water, but I've got news for him, water goes the least path of resistance. And he's talking about retention ponds, you put those in, you're going to have to aerate them, otherwise we've got a mosquito problem in the area. Then on top of that, the 200 and some apartments, he's telling us that the traffic isn't going to be bad? Give me a break. The traffic right now, I walked my dog this morning, and I had no idea how much 16th Street has in traffic at 7 o'clock in the morning. I was up there and I couldn't believe it, and I talked to one of my neighbors, she says, oh yeah, that's normal. Well, what's it going to be with another 300-plus cars coming out of that unit every morning and coming back every night? It's ridiculous. Number two, we not only have a water saturation problem, we've got a problem with apartment buildings. Good Lord, go up 16th Street from Myers and walk up and just take a look, row after row after row. Not only that, there's duplexes. After you get off the main drag and you get off the side streets where the elementary school is, there's more duplexes. We've got enough rental units up in our little area to choke a horse, for crying out loud. Give us a break. I don't get it. I really don't. If you're going to walk that property today, you better wear boots. It was, it was set up as an agricultural piece, and you, I don't know, maybe you folks have been around here, but you remember when the city farm was there? That poor old guy, they drove him out because they deemed his land agricultural. He had a little city farm with a little petty goats and sheep and whatever that they'd put out for Christmas time for the kids, kind of nice, but it's all gone now. Now there's a sign on that corner that says it's commercial. Well, how about that? It just all dried up overnight. Give me a break on that. I don't mean to be a wise guy or whatever, but we've got a little nice neighborhood up there, and this other complex is going to drag it down, just as sure as I stand here. I really mean it. If you look up to all the apartments we have on 16th Street, it's just amazing. And that's about it. I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel in regard to this item? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yeah, Dan Brookhouse, 1247 Hearthstone Court, Holland, Michigan. I can't really follow Larry.
Make sure that you speak into the microphone and toward us, otherwise people can't hear you.
All right. To follow Larry is going to be tough, but I would like to say, look at the investment that the neighborhood has made into Holland. I would encourage each one of you to look at the owners of the property, how long we've been there, and how much taxes and everything else that we invest in the neighborhood. And I understand the investment that the developer has, and that he put a lot of money in trying to build this all up, but we have a lot of neighbors that have been there a long time. We've been there 23 years, others around 30, and we kind of all joke and say, you know, all the kids have grown up and we're still here. So I'm looking at long-term investment. I'm 55. I don't plan on selling and retiring yet. I'm looking 20 years out. 20 years, I want a value in a house. Right now, the apartments are beautiful. 20 years from now, you've got people that, in the apartments, that don't have the same ownership that homeowners do, and what are they going to do with the apartments? And how fast do the value of those apartments go down, and how fast does our property values go down? So I would like you to think about that. Please look at our neighborhood, look at how long that we've been there, and look at our investment. And now we have an investor from Indianapolis saying, well, this is my investment. Well, let's compare numbers to numbers, and we're long-term. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to placing this item on first reading? So moved? Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd. Any discussion by counsel? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters? Corbin? Coronado?
Yes.
Arms Horse?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item 12E 1.1, agreement with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy for grant funding to purchase an electric street sweeper. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to ask our Transportation Department Director, Brian White, to come up to give you a little bit of a highlight. We're not purchasing anything here, this is just another step in the process, and feel that it's important to let you know, this grant that we're applying for in order to eventually purchase an electric street sweeper. I have to take my time saying that. So Brian, I'll try to get forwarded to the right place, and you let me know when you want me to...
Sounds good.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, that's great. Good evening, Mayor Box, good evening, council members, good evening, members of the public. This is somewhat exciting for me. Granted, it's not your construction project or anything like that, but we do operate a pretty sizable fleet out of our Transportation Department that includes motor vehicles as well as things like street sweepers. So we're, as you all know, trying to continuously green up our fleet, and there was a grant that came out from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. It was the Fuel Transformation Grant that was basically put out for applications last fall, and this is being funded through the Volkswagen settlement with regard to that emission situation with Volkswagen, and this basically represents Michigan's portion of that, that they're putting back into what they call the Fuel Transformation Program and the grants that they're bringing out of that. So we applied for two units, a hybrid bucket truck and a street sweeper. The bucket truck did not score nearly as well as the street sweeper, but we did get over the finish line with the street sweeper, and part of that is because with the street sweeper, you actually have two diesel engines that operate out of that platform, one that runs the chassis and basically moves the vehicle down the street, but then the other one operates the vacuum section of the sweeper. So it scored really well with regard to the emission reductions that we can realize by basically taking one of our standard fuel, you know, diesel fuel sweepers and replacing it with this all-electric version. So they are not cheap. As you can see, the grant amounts there, basically we received a $455,000 grant. Our match is going to be up to $195,000. So I should just share with you, as what was written in the report for reference, a new diesel-powered version of this would probably be, and we did check this fairly recent, a little north of $250,000. So even though the overall cost of the vehicle, the electric version, is quite expensive, our portion of that is certainly less than what we would normally spend on a diesel-powered version. So I think that's important to point out. The vendor that we're looking at going with is Global Environmental Products, they're basically the only vendor that has a fully electric version. They have a few of these out in the, across the US. There's some in New York, some in Colorado, and I just saw recently, there's some in Oregon as well, so they're getting across the US with them, but they are somewhat limited in supply. The grant would include a Level 2 charging station, so that would come with the vehicle. We would house that at the Transportation Department. It would take about eight to 10 hours to recharge the vehicle after standard duty use, if you will, and again, we have a, typically we've, keep three street sweepers, I'll get that. We keep those in the fleet, so this would be one of the three, and of course, the concern is, you know, in emergency situations, you know, you just finished up a standard duty cycle, storm comes in... finished up a standard-duty cycle, storm comes in, what have you, you need to get that thing out on the road. You don't want it sitting at the charging station. So just understand that we do have the others in the fleet, right, to address that sort of a situation where that could come up. The warranty, and we did just check on this today to verify, but it's a standard, and for sweepers, one year bumper-to-bumper standard, but then they are gonna provide the five-year on the battery, on the electric. So, and I believe there's an option for some extended warranty that we'll probably look at wrapping into the grant, certainly if it's at that match amount, because I think that that would go a long way. And then, interestingly enough, and Eagle's pretty serious about this, we need to drill holes in the engines of the old one, and we need to basically cut up the chassis. And so if you wanna just advance, once we do get the new one online, and so the one on the right is actually the all-electric version that we demoed, and I think you all were at the budget meeting, we did a little preview of that. We got some videotape of that when they came by with the demo version a few months ago. But then the one on the left is our existing version. It's diesel-powered, again, two diesel engines. That's the one that we would take out of service and decommission. So it's exciting, but as Keith said, this is the second or third step on the process. As I indicated in the report, we would come back to you, once we get that agreement signed and we go out for bids, we'd come back to you with the bid and a recommendation from there. So one thing I would like to share, too, on this one, and it's kind of an ancillary or secondary benefit, but as Councilman Peters can appreciate, one of the benefits that we're expecting to see with this is, from a noise standpoint, that I think this really represents a reduction in the overall noise, and I know that it's real difficult to get downtown in certain areas without a whole lot of parked vehicles and things like that. So this is gonna allow us to do some of that work while keeping the decibel level down. So we're looking forward to that secondary benefit for this one, too.
Great. Any questions for staff?
No, I just applaud the city and you for pursuing our electric policies and reducing our carbon footprint.
Yeah.
Plus, it's darling.
Yeah, right, right. I would like to share, too, our two lead vehicle mechanics, Mark Groenheit and Barry Wassink, were real instrumental. There was a lot of work that went into making application for this, and we had to jump through quite a few hoops, and those two really stepped up to make it happen, so.
Great. Any other...
Motion.
Yeah. Any more questions, comments from counsel? I just have one. You're not just gonna scrap that old one, you're gonna recycle it, right?
Yes. It will see patnos.
All right. Great, great. Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, what is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the agreement with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy for grant funding to purchase this... Did you say adorable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Darling, adorable.
Adorable street sweeper, yes. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Motion approved twelve E point one, point one-one. A lot of ones.
Lot of ones.
To approve the agreement between the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy for the grant funding to purchase an electric street sweeper.
Moved by Corbin. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, twelve E six point one, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Parks and Recreation Sal Perez Scholarship Program, cash receipts, reporting dates January thirty-one through February twenty-seven, two-hundred-and-one dollars. Parks and Recreation, donation for bench at Collin Park, Ryan Groan, one-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. Human Relations, Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, disabled American veterans, two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and five cents. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to SED donors.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the gifts?
Move to accept SED gifts with appreciation.
Moved by Coronado. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, twelve E six point two, Rest Haven Farmstead Project. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, mayor and counsel, and I'll momentarily introduce two guests that we have tonight with us, maybe three, that are involved with this project, but let me just set the table a little bit as to what we're looking for here. This is not often-type project before you, and specifically, what is happening here is utilizing a specific financing vehicle. The request was made to us initially from Rest Haven, where we would, if we had a more active or really an active sitting Economic Development Corporation, that we could have done this financing ourselves. But with my history at the county, I knew that they have done these more recently, so with my recommendation and support, and quite frankly, that it probably would get done quicker this way, Ottawa County was very gracious in working with Rest Haven and bringing this matter forward. It's a great partnership with Ottawa County, and really, what's before you tonight is taking action on a resolution, and important in the action is that you denote some things in the state law that this serves a public purpose and moves forward something and a project that's before the Planning Commission right now. They've received already many initial approvals. My understanding is there's some tweaks to the site plan that they're bringing forward right now, that in talking to planning staff, are the types of things that are to be expected when you go through a large project and just working through that. So again, what's before you tonight is a resolution that would really take follow-up action from what Ottawa County has already considered and adopted. And with that, I don't know if all of them have something to say. I think we have with us Deidre Vreeman and Seth Weiner from Rest Haven that maybe I thought it'd be beneficial just because this has been before Planning Commission, but it hasn't been before City Council, where they could give you a little bit of an update on the exciting plans that they have for an additional campus here in the city of Holland. And then I really appreciate Becky Huddink being here from Ottawa County, who worked with Rest Haven and brought them through the process. So Becky, I probably described a lot of the things that Ottawa County did already, but certainly if I missed anything, feel free to correct me, and thank you for being here tonight.
Happy to answer any questions that may come, but you did a good job.
All right. So maybe our representatives from Rest Haven can just talk about your overall project and what this financing means for you.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Deidre Vreisman with Rest Haven. I'm the president and CEO there. I know we've talked about Farmstead here, or at least found some of you a few times. So the project is an additional campus for Rest Haven to provide independent living and assisted living through a licensed home for the aged, for seniors in our community. The project includes twenty-four duplex single-family homes, eighty apartment-style units in two separate buildings, forty units in each, a clubhouse where there's communal dining and activity programming, and then a twenty-four-unit dementia care assisted living project. So that's what the Farmstead is planned for, and I'll let Seth talk about what we've been doing in terms of the financing.
Thanks, Deidre. Seth Weiner, nice to see you all. We've been, as Keith mentioned, working with Becky and her team at the Ottawa County Economic Development Corporation to pursue tax-exempt bond funding through the EDC, which needs to go through an EDC conduit. The recommendation is for up to eighty million dollars. There is some buffer in there, as we can all appreciate. There have been fluctuations in construction pricing as of late, so we did want to build that in. It has gone through multiple layers of review at the Economic Development Corporation of Ottawa County, as well as the Finance and Administration Committee of Ottawa County, and the Board of Commissions as well. So happy to field any specific questions there may be, but this is, the Holland City approval is a part of our project plan process as well.
All right. Any questions from council members? Great, thank you. You guys did a great, must have done such a great job. There's no need for questions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Vreeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnshorst. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Next item, twelve E six point three, proposed ordinance amendments regarding local watercraft controls. Mr. Van Beek?
Who remembers prior conversations on this one?
Not me.
Yeah, Nikki. So this seems like, and it's potentially the last stop or the last action on something that seems like has been before, not only the city, but also surrounding townships for, man, probably at least two and a half, three years. Just a little bit of history. You'll recall that we had several years of high water in the larger area, certainly on Lake Michigan, and as that connected into Lake Makatawa. And then Mr. Vindeikin and others, we remember some pretty wet days going even on the causeway out to Windmill Island Garden. During that time, you'll probably recall that there were increased concerns, understandably, about boats on Lake Makatawa in particular. That's the region that we're talking about, and with the high water, the waves that would come off of those boats, then doing increased damage to the properties bordering Lake Makatawa. The Michigan Department of Natural Resources is the entity that ultimately takes a look at and goes through multiple processes, public hearings and the like, to consider and then put into place temporary and permanent water, what do they call it, watercraft controls, local watercraft controls. Historically, there were a set of such rules in place on Lake Makatawa, and I think we have one that this designates, and different with a color coding, what those current watercraft controls are in place. You'll probably say, "Yeah, but Keith, I remember," and yes, you're right, we went through a process and put in place a one-year temporary set of no-wake controls, which really extended a buffer, if you would, of three hundred feet surrounding all of Lake Mack during that high-water period. But those temporary controls were only allowed to be in there temporarily for a one-year time period. We had discussions at that point with the DNR and pursued and ultimately recommended and asked for for them, and then they came and had a whole series of local public hearings, where we were looking actually to have a tiered set, or really two sets of rules that would be in place. One set would be if, early in the year, let's say, roundabout now, you would take a measurement of how high the water was on Lake Mack, and if it was at a certain amount or lower, then one set of rules would be in place, like historically what this has been, and if it was above that amount, then we'd have a different rules, set of rules in place that potentially would be more restrictive. What has happened, though, is after the process, and DNR taking a look at that and getting public feedback, and I will say, including having conversations with the Sheriff's Department that has experience with enforcing such rules in different places, and they are the primary enforcer of those rules also on Lake Makatawa, and feedback with Holland Township, Park Township, and the city of Holland, they really came back and said, "We are not recommending," and in fact, the way the process works is they come back and they say, "Here are the proposed new set of rules." And they have come back with a proposed new set of rules that's roughly depicted on the map in front of you, and you definitely have the language in the set of ordinances in front of you that, in effect, creates a three-hundred-foot buffer surrounding all of Lake Makatawa that would be in place for slow no-wake for boats twenty-six feet and below, and then would have an additional three-hundred-foot buffer surrounding all of Lake Mack that would be in existence for boats twenty-six feet and higher. And then if you're outside of that six-hundred feet, then you generally have open, I'll call it, open water. But it also, in the area that for us Hollanders know, we know the Narrows, that also would create that entire area as being slow no-wake for all boats. So that is what is before you tonight. This has certainly been a process that I've helped to coordinate. You'll see that this is a map that was put together by our GIS department, has been shared with Park Township, has been shared with Holland Charter Township, who is going through the processes right now of considering exactly what's in front of you. My understanding is that Park Township considered this last week and has voted to approve what's in front of you this evening. This is being recommended to you from a staff perspective. Holland Charter Township is also recommending this from a staff perspective for their board, and that's important because really all three entities need to agree to this set of rules before the DNR would take final action to actually put this into place as being the new proposed, the new no-wake zones moving forward. So that is where we find ourselves after a lot of process and about three years of work. And again, we, from a staff perspective and with the input from the Ottawa County Marine Unit, we are recommending that these be supported by you this evening.
Thank you. Questions from council members? Nikki?
No, I don't have a question, but as we know, it takes all the municipalities on the lake to make this work. When Park Township decided to go their own way the other, last year, it didn't work. And the big issue is enforcement, of course, and that's not our problem, and the other issue is education of boaters. Many people don't know this. You get on a boat, you take off, and it's the homeowners, poor homeowners on the lake. But anyhow, you know, they are the ones who bear that brunt, and just safety issues. So if we could do something about enforcement, that'd be great, but we can't. So I recommend we do this. You need to really have the whole lake be a no-wake zone, and that would be easy to enforce.
Scott?
Yeah, so Keith, you were part of these discussions. The one thing I wasn't clear on is the restricted area in yellow there, the top of the map, where it narrows down. What was the purpose, and I'm familiar with the lake, I've bowled on it, what's the difference between that restricted area versus just, I guess, would be north, no, that'd be east, excuse me, west, excuse me, west of that, where it doesn't, there's not so much restriction? What's the difference in those two areas? Because I don't recall, you know, being out on the lake, I don't understand what the difference would be.
Yeah, good question, Scott. So there is the Pine Creek Bay, and of course, that's not in our jurisdiction, and there's some other areas that there have been historic other rules that have been in place for a long period of time. And that, what I'll call that one section of yellow roughly in front of Collin Park that extends across to the other side of the lake, that's a historic restriction that has been in place for a long period of time and would continue to exist. And really, what that looks is, that's a pretty busy corridor, and my understanding is then that would be additional restriction for those larger boats, that that's a no- additional restriction for those larger boats, that that's a no-wake area for those larger boats. So the action that is before you tonight does not rescind that historic no-wake zone. It just retains that as being in place as has been there historically. And if I could, education is important. We do the best we can, right? We put out things in our communications on our website. And then definitely what, what I would foresee happen is a version very close to or almost exact of the map that's in front of you now. We would put that on signs and anywhere that there's boat docks, particularly public boat docks, but we would probably encourage that also of the private properties, not individual, but like a private marina, for example, that we would plaster these where we can to make sure that people understand what the rules are.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, questions from council members? What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Moved to proposed ordinance amendments to Section 1319-2, Local Watercraft Controls, Final Adoption, April 13, 2022.
Moved by Coronado, supported by Aaron's Horse. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Aaron's Horse?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Item 12E 6.4, Downtown Group, Downtown Holland Social District Update and Plan Modification Request. Mr. Van Beek?
We're going to get you to turn your heads a little bit. I'm going to immediately hand it off to Assistant City Manager Matt Van Dyken, who is in charge of what we affectionately refer to as the Downtown Group. And then I bet he's going to introduce you to some other members.
Yeah, thank you. I'll start it off, and then Amy, I think, will come up and answer any additional questions that I may not be able to answer. But last May, on a recommendation from both the PSD and the DDA, you, as the City Council, approved a downtown social district in downtown Holland. As a part of that, you had asked us to come back and give you an update on how that's going and perhaps have some additional discussions. So that night is tonight. I can report that that has been very popular for the downtown social district. It's had an extremely positive impact on our downtown businesses that are participating in it. And we have had basically zero problems. The only negative input that we get back from our citizens and our visitors is, "Hey, I came down here for sidewalk sales, and I thought you had a social district." And we have to explain to them, "Well, the side, the social district is closed during those events in downtown Holland." So that's, that is what it is, right? It's been positive. We're not seeing trash issues. I know that was a concern with council. We're not seeing issues with people being over-served. As a matter of fact, I call it the stroller effect. The place that I see social district drinks the most in downtown Holland are in the top of a stroller with a husband generally pushing a stroller and somebody else is in shopping at, at our establishment. So overall, it's been, it is, it's a lot of that. It's been a positive impact. The DDA and the PSD had a joint meeting last month, was it? And they are making a recommendation to you that we expand that social district to be allowed during events, but not be allowed during parades. I don't know if you've seen this, but the Governor's Office has now extended these. They used to have a sunset, but a social district can now be a permanent amenity to downtowns in Michigan, which I think is a positive move for our businesses downtown. But with that, if you have any further questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, or more than likely what's going to happen is I'm going to kick them to Amy to answer.
Thanks, Matt. Questions from council members? Yeah, go ahead. Nikki?
No, no questions, but I have had positive feedback too from vendors, shop owners, people. And I do remember Chief Messer was not opposed to this either. You know, along with our concerns about trash, it seemed to be a go on all fronts. So I'm happy to hear that it's continuing to be positive.
Belinda?
I just had a question for the downtown merchants. Is there a substantial increase for them? Or, I mean, do we know any of the statistics or revenues?
So we, we do know in talking to a couple of the, the, the businesses that did participate in the social district that on the weekends, they'd see several thousand dollars in additional sales through the social district. So, I mean, if, and that doesn't sound like much, right? But if you add up the number of businesses that are participating in the social district with a couple thousand dollars a weekend, with 30 good weekends, it starts to really be a significant economic impact on those businesses. So they, it's been really positive for them.
Well, I think that's great, especially in lieu of COVID and everything. That slowed everything down. So it's awesome for our downtown.
Other questions. Scott?
Yeah, we talked about this. It was probably one of those that were the most worried about, you know, introducing this into the community. You did mention no parades, correct?
Yes, no parades.
Okay. And we do have a number of large events that still bring a large number of people downtown.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so that, that worries me a bit too as well, is the number of people that will be downtown with children, families. And, you know, we talk about the people who drink, but we don't talk about the people who don't drink and the, and the families who don't participate in those things. And I don't certainly want to deter people from going downtown who traditionally have been here, doing this for many years, coming from all sorts of places. So I, I am just a little bit concerned how that will be received amongst the entire population that does visit the City of Holland, not just a handful of people.
Any other comments, questions from council members?
I, Scott, I, I understand your concerns, and I, I think that it's important that the staff has come back to us, Downtown Group has come back to us and, and given us kind of an update on, on how it's gone. I've had conversations with merchants that participate in, in this. And everyone that I've talked to that's a participating merchant says, "It's been great for business." The only issue that they've had is that confusion from, you know, our residents and from visitors that come here as to, as to when it starts, when it ends. You know, why can't I, we actually, we had it on Saturday morning. I talked to some folks who said, "We've got to finish our beer before noon when the parade starts." And then, you know, when the parade was over, then they could go back to social district again, and there was some confusion there. But merchants, and the question I wanted to ask is, is this what the downtown businesses want? I know that the DDA and PSD have voted on this. This is what we're hearing from the merchants that, that this is what they're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, everyone that we've talked to, everyone that I've talked to, everyone that Amy, Cara has talked to, have said, "Yeah, let's extend this, and let's, let's have it during events." And, and I, Councilman Corbin, I absolutely understand your concerns. And one of the things that I think is great about our community is that our downtown businesses are going to police this more than our police are ever going to police it. You know, they watch out. They make sure people aren't over-served. They're as much, if not more, concerned with our reputation and our visitor experience than, than we are. So it, loud and clear heard, we're going to continue to monitor it and make sure that everybody that comes to Holland has a really positive experience, no matter what. If they want to have a beer, or if they want to have a lemonade or a Froyo, that's great, but they'll have that as an option.
And, and I think they've done a great job of keeping things clean downtown as well. As council's aware, I'm down there early in the morning, sometimes 5:00 AM. And I think in the course of last summer, I picked up maybe one cup. It's, people have been really good about that, whether it's the merchants or whether it's the, the participating residents and visitors. I think that, that it was a very successful thing. So, great, thank you. Yeah, Lynn?
Yeah, it seems to me that, from what you're saying, is that the people who are taking advantage of the social district are not going downtown to take advantage of the social district. They're already going downtown, and this is an added amenity that we're offering. Is that a fair, is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, I think it's fair. You could look at it much like the fireplace downtown. Are people coming down just for the fireplace? Probably not. But it is awful nice, you know, this last week to have it down there. And I think the social district is very similar to that. It's another thing that we can offer. People aren't getting over-served. They're not coming down here just for it. But yeah, if you've got a two-hour wait, which some of our downtown restaurants have, it's awfully nice to go get your favorite from Big Lake or New Holland or wherever your favorite watering hole is. Take a walk, do some window shopping, maybe buy some stuff, and then come back once your little buzzer goes off. So it is, it's absolutely an added amenity.
Belinda?
I just had a question. So, being fairly new, so how long is the social district? Is it all year round? I'm not, I'm not familiar. And then, Mayor, you said that they have to drink it before the parades and be done, or clarify?
I'm going to let you take that one, Matt.
Yeah, so currently, the, the way our social district is set up is it's not open during events or parades. So for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, which the social district opens at 11:00, the St. Patrick's Day Parade started at noon, so they could participate from 11:00 until noon. But as soon as the parade started, the social district closed until the parade was over, and then it opened back up again. So that's what the mayor is speaking to.
But the social district is all year round? Is that my understanding? Okay, perfect.
Any other comments, Councilmember Scott?
How are we going to transition from a morning of activities or an event that's taking place, where a parade begins later in the day? How do we transition, I mean, the cutoff, really? I mean, people might still remain walking up and down the street with alcohol during those parade times, correct?
The cutoff is when the, yeah, the start of the parade.
Right, so.
It's a sales cutoff, correct?
Correct.
It's a sales cutoff, but people are still, you know, at the last minute, as you just mentioned, walking downtown with alcoholic beverages during an event where we're drawing a lot of people in from a lot of places. And those, those streets and roads get pretty crowded. Yeah. So I, I don't want to echo or just mention that I'm not suggesting that the, the business owners aren't being responsible or that things aren't being picked up and taken care of. We, we obviously note, note that. And that's good. It's, it's good practice for us to see that happening. I'm just a little bit reluctant on how we're deploying this during a large crowds and large events.
Any other comments, questions from council members? Quincy?
We really, do we really have a way to enforce that, that cutoff period then? I guess going into what Corbin's saying is, is, do we really have any way to enforce that really? Or are we really, I guess, relying on citizens just to follow the rule?
So my understanding is that if the establishments operate outside of the hours that are allowed by our social district, they risk losing their liquor license. And for those businesses, that is a much, much bigger hammer than we could ever wield.
And, and Quincy, there's a certain amount of enforcement that's going on now during the hours of the, of the social district when it starts or when it finishes. So in other words, we, we'd start, if it starts at 11:00 o'clock, the businesses aren't going to be able to sell before 11:00 o'clock. We would be policing it during parade times the same way. That they, they know when those parades start, when they finish, the same way that they would know when social district hours start and finish. It's just a subset within there. So same enforcement, and, you know, as, as staff has said to us, we haven't had any issues in the, in the first year of this. I wouldn't think personally that there would be more issues because of the adding these or, or having these additional restrictions in there.
Any other comments, questions from council members? What's the pleasure of council in regard to this item? Moved by Peters. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra? Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
No.
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron's Horse?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Next item, the item that was removed from the consent agenda. Item 12E 6.8, Management and Administrative Services Downtown Group. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to introduce and ask Cara DeAvery to come forward, who's been working on this as an initiative of the PSD, the Principal Shopping District Board. They had this not only as a priority in their strategic plan, but specifically had monies earmarked in their budgeted funds, funds that are, of course, assessed to and collected by the city for the principal shopping district. So Cara, why don't you come forward and just briefly outline and then answer any questions about this consultant and project?
Yeah, so I know I've been before you talking about some of our diversity, equity, and inclusion goals in downtown Holland. And we do have a DEI Subcommittee of volunteers, representatives from our board, business owners, organizations like Ottawa County and Lake River Ethnic Diversity Alliance sit on that committee as well. And as we've been meeting over the course of the past year or so, we've sort of realized that as a volunteer Subcommittee with unlimited staff, that we could really benefit from the assistance of a DEI consultant, someone that, or a group or someone that does this work and knows this work and can really help us in making strategic goals, outlining benchmarking measures, collecting data. So we did issue an RFP back in July, July 1. We had $10,000 set aside in our current year budget for hiring of a consultant. We had nine consulting firms that responded to our RFP. One was located here in West Michigan, two within the state, and the rest were nationwide. Our DEI Subcommittee met, reviewed all of the nine proposals, and selected their top three candidates to sit down for a Zoom interview that we did last fall. COVID has slowed our, our timeline down significantly. Of those three interviews, they selected the Web Advisory Group as their top consulting firm. Their initial proposal for a year-long engagement was, I think, approximately $126,000. So I had the pleasure of going to them and saying, "We'd really like to work with you, but we only have $10,000 to spend." And they were still really eager to work with us. A lot of their members of their consulting firm have ties to West Michigan. So we talked about sort of scaling back the proposal, the length of the engagement, which is outlined in the report. But essentially, the Web Advisory Group will be sort of doing an environmental scan, an assessment of our downtown Holland businesses, attitudes, feelings, and then making some strategic recommendations. What should we be doing to create an atmosphere and an environment that's very inclusive downtown? We're all members of our community. All visitors feel welcome here. What are some actionable items that we can do? How can we operationalize what we're already doing to make it more inclusive?
Great, thank you. Questions from council members? Mr. Corbin?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, the reason I asked to have removed it, I just had a few questions regarding it. As Keith has alluded to, Mr. Van Beek has alluded to, Principal Shopping District is an assessed, assessed to the business owners who've agreed to the assessment. But the money collected is a tax, and because of that, we're entrusted as a council, as a city, to use those funds in a way that meets our goals, our objectives, and create policies that reflect that. So looking at that, you can go on a number of websites. You can go on a number of locations that talk about DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. For those who might be listening that don't know what that means, I'm learning myself over time. But, you know, just looking at it, you know, some of the definitions that I found, and one in particular, it says, "Policy and procedures and programs that promote the representation, representation of the different groups of individuals." And that includes age, race, ethnicity, the abilities, the disabilities, the gender, religious issues, cultural, and sexual orientation. So I guess I'm hopeful that when we look at DEI, we're not only looking at only a few of these, but we're looking at more holistically all these different parties that make up the definition of DEI. I think it's imperative that we use those funds accordingly. And I have seen the makeup of the DEI Committee, and I know there's some absence of, or the presence of, of some of these are missing. So I hope that, you know, we start looking at what that looks like. So I guess to the questions, can you kind of just address briefly, not really in depth? You made some bullets in our, the proposal. Um, you made some bullets in our, the proposal or the recommendation to us on what the goals are. And I know some of these are being answered in your, your consultant, but still I would think you have some perspective of maybe what goals uh, you're looking to, to achieve. But then also, you're talking about surveying. Who are you surveying? What, what's, who's being the target audience? Um, of course, you're gonna be sharing the data, but then you talked about training, increased business opportunities for, for those parties. Um, uh, different funding sources. You wanna bring various funding sources from different areas and then use those funding sources to help promote DEI. So I don't know, can you talk on, what, there's seven bullets there. Can you talk briefly on how you might implement that?
Yeah, so I'll say that those, um, bullet points that you're referring to were part of our initial, um, request for proposals, um, which is what they responded to with their quote of $126,000. So we have had to, as a committee, sort of scale back into just taking the first sort of initial steps in that. Um, I'll start by just saying that our Diversity Equity Inclusion Subcommittee has really adopted, um, the feeling, the strategy that all means all. So we are talking about everyone. Um, in our community, everyone visits, everyone that visits, um, downtown Holland, we wanna make sure that our atmosphere and our environment is welcome, welcoming, inclusive, and engaging to all of them. Um, I'll say that, um, alongside this, um, consulting firm, we are also currently working with Hope College's Center for Leadership on a project. Um, they are exploring the business case for diversity, equity, and inclusion in downtown Holland. Um, it's a group of, I think, four or five students with a professional consultant and, um, a subject matter expert, Robin Afric, from Ottawa County. And they are currently, um, have been interviewing our downtown Holland business owners. And I have just released a survey to the public to find out attitudes and feelings and experiences about downtown Holland. What our consulting firm will be doing is really looking, talking to our businesses and doing an environmental scan of the, um, business owners' attitudes and feelings. What is the current environment among our merchants and our business owners for downtown? Then based on that, they're gonna help us, um, make some strategic goals. We know that DEI is a journey. We're never gonna be like, "You know what? We're diverse. We're done." You know, "We don't need to work on this anymore." We are always gonna be working towards being better. Um, but what can we do? Are we looking for, um, a certain increase in, in customer base? And are we gonna measure that? Are we looking for different marketing strategies? Where are we promoting downtown Holland? What languages are we promoting downtown Holland in? What images are we using of what downtown customers look like? So we're expecting that the consultant will really help us, um, make some strategic goals, such as those.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council members? Yeah, Quincy?
So you said, uh, that they will be speaking with business owners, correct?
Correct.
Will there be an emphasis on speaking with, uh, community members as well?
Not as part of their proposal. That work is right now being done by the Hope College Center for Leadership. So, um, they just, um, released a survey. We sent her downtown business owners and they're working on getting that out as well. That's really talking to, um, community members, downtown customers. Um, but the environmental scan, which is, um, a process that the Web Advisory Group uses, will be primarily focused on our, on our business owners themselves.
Okay, this is a, a comment, a personal comment from me. And seeing that, and I see this a lot in society now. We want to include certain individuals, but ostracize others. And I know you spoke to that, but I guess I want to put that out there to make sure everybody is included, not just this group. We put something out to make sure this group is accepted and it ostracizes this group or makes this group feel uncomfortable. There has to be a balance that's struck there. And, um, I hope you guys, I hope you guys hit it, hit the nail square on the head with that.
All right, yes, Lynn?
Yeah, and I agree with, with Quincy. I, and I think you're well on your way to doing that. I, I appreciate the fact that you reviewed so many proposals. And it sounds like, based on what I've looked at, you know, the website of the Web Advisory Group, and it looks like they're really, uh, an interesting and quality group of people. And, and I know that you've been working on, you know, you have some broad goals and objectives on your DEI committee and your PSD and DDA. Um, and so I think it's really exciting that you're, that you've found a way to, to really kind of drill down and, and get some actionable and measurable goals and objectives. So, well done.
All right, anyone else? Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 12E 6.8? Moved by, was that Jay? Was that you? Moved by Peters?
Support.
Support by?
Aaron Sors.
Aaron Sors, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Uh, item number 13, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, uh, three quick things this evening. One, um, thank you to the mayor and Belinda. Uh, the three of us spent a good portion of the last two days in Lansing, uh, representing all of you and the community, um, oh, and Shadow. Um, uh, in Lansing, uh, representing and having great conversations, um, with the MMLO, the Michigan Municipal League. And it's the Capcom. It's their quick little, you know, branded of the Capitol Conference, which is really focused on legislative initiatives, somewhat at the federal level, but primarily at the state level. And that included an opportunity to specifically at breakfast this morning, talk to some of our legislators and definitely, uh, have conversations with them and make strategies overall with municipalities across the state on items such as short-term rentals, protecting our constitutional revenue sharing, and really being able to have some great conversations with other communities about projects that I think we're kind of leading the way on with broadband infrastructure, uh, with affordable housing, um, with place making. Um, so, good times, um, and, uh, good to be back with you this evening. Just so you're aware, uh, we did pull off the fire vehicles item this, this evening. And if you or the viewing public is wondering, "Why did we do that?" Um, we are moving as quick as we can because we want to, um, and will be recommending to you to do that purchase yet in this fiscal year instead of waiting till next fiscal year. And we have the money set aside, so we're very confident in doing that. The reason we wanna move that up, um, is because of supply chain issues and prices, price increases that are coming forward. We were hoping to get a firm price yet by the close of business today, so we could still slide that number in and have that for you tonight. And we just quite didn't get there. So look for that to be back in front of you at your next meeting. And then finally, uh, because Sinca asked me to, and I do what Sinca asked me to do, um, I'm reminding you as council members, uh, there was communication out to you about, um, getting some good City of Holland swag. And, um, so, uh, respond to that where if you're looking at something, uh, get back in touch with Sinca 'cause she's, um, looking to make that order soon. And that's all that I have.
Great, thank you. Uh, I just have two items. One to piggyback on, uh, what Mr. Van Beek was saying about the Capitol Conference. Uh, you have great, great opportunities to have discussions with legislators, other communities. Uh, one of the biggest takeaways I have from this is we have a lot to be proud of in this community. Uh, not only how this body works together, uh, as, uh, in the way that we do and as well as we do. Uh, that's not the case necessarily in all of the communities across the state. Uh, also the way that different organizations and entities within this community work together, communicate with one another, move toward common goals, uh, is also something that is, uh, pretty rare, uh, in the state. And we've got a lot to be proud of there. And frankly, uh, probably the biggest one for me is how, how well our staff does and what we get done and are able to get done. Uh, a lot of communities are struggling to keep the lights on and keep things going. Uh, for us, that often is a given, that, uh, all of those things are just gonna happen. And then we've got big things that we're able to do on top of that because everything from the ground up in this community, we seem to be firing on all cylinders. Uh, and along that same line, uh, for those folks, uh, who may have heard that some pretty big things were discussed at last week's study session. Uh, that study session was not broadcast. We're working on getting information out. Uh, the first of a number of mayor messages, uh, went out on Monday in that regard. There's another one that's been recorded and will probably be posted within the next few days. And we've got a couple more that are planned as well, uh, to get the word out to the community, the things that we have, uh, potentially gonna be making decisions on and gives the, the community the opportunity to have a little more information and for us to be able to have a basis to be able to talk with them about what's going on as well. Uh, the first one was, uh, out on YouTube on Monday. Uh, next one coming in, in another couple of days. So watch the city's YouTube channel. It's out on Facebook as well. Uh, I think we tweet those out. I, I like to try to repeat those as well, so those will be out there. So that's what I have this evening. Uh, appointments, motions, communications from council members. Mr. Corbin? Go ahead, Scott.
A couple things. I attended with, uh, Councilman Coronado, uh, the Ottawa County Agricultural Conference. First one I've attended. Wonderful conference. Uh, our farming community is wonderful. I mean, we don't have a large agricultural area in, in the city of Holland. Uh, most of it does reside in Fifth Ward, but that's Alligan County. But they do provide a lot of nourishment to our communities, um, through a variety of ways, and let alone a lot of jobs. But they have a lot of challenges too. And I, and I, we knew that, right? I think we knew that they had those challenges, but boy, they have a lot of challenges before them. And they're, they're, they're meeting the challenge. They're stepping up to it. And very proud of our agricultural community just to see what they, what they do. Now, the second thing is, as the mayor pro tem, I'm responsible for creating a committee to, uh, conduct the evaluation on our city manager. So yeah, I see, as he looks up that way. Um, so myself and, um, councilperson, uh, Arnshorst and Mayor Box is sitting on that committee currently. And, uh, we put together a series of questions. I think they're very similar, if not the same, uh, as last year, on some direction. Uh, we've turned that over to the city attorney. And the reason for that is under FOIA. It's been requested that, that does, is done in closed session. So anything related to those documents, uh, need to go through our city attorney. So Ron Vanderveen will be sending that out to you tomorrow. Um, once you do receive that, please get it back to us within a week. We're asking one week. And if you don't return it in one week, uh, you'll get a text every day from me. So, uh, be prepared. Uh, maybe even an email. I don't know. There might be other ways to harass you. I'm not sure. But, um, I will harass you until I get what I want. Um, so if you could get that back within a week, I think you get plenty of time by reviewing those documents. Uh, answer all the questions, please. I mean, even if you really don't have a, there's a, a one to five. You, you should be able to answer between a one and five, at least that. Um, try and make as many comments as possible. It only helps us improve, uh, our city manager's, um, when his responsibilities are to us. Make sure we have a, a really good evaluation to share with him. Uh, return those back to Ron. Don't return them back to me. Uh, again, we wanna honor that FOIA process. Uh, Sinca will collaborate, you know, consolidate those responses, get it back to the committee. And then our, our committee will set up a time and, uh, a special meeting to, to meet with all of you and, and review those evaluations. So if you could, you've got seven days from tomorrow, or you're gonna get some phone calls from me. So, thank you.
Scott, I just have one question. Not that it's ever happened before, but you're gonna be really clear about what's good, whether one is good or five is good, right? So, so some of us can't mix that up and?
Yeah, there's only one of us that can't figure that out, Mayor Box. So, um, you wanna go, go ahead and cover that, just?
No, I, I, I'm not sure what it is. I wanna, I mean, I wanna make sure you tell me what it is.
Yeah, so one is, is not so good. Five is?
All right, so we're, we're looking for high score, not golf score?
Yeah, we're looking for high scores. And we'll, we'll have to do some averaging if you don't answer them. Um, and that complicates the question a little bit for us. Takes a little bit extra time. So if you would, please try and answer or score every question and then provide some comments if you would, so he has some feedback. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Any other communications from council members? Uh, seeing, yeah, go ahead, Quincy.
I have kids that have gone to Holland Public School. It has been, so we had a new superintendent that was hired in, um, for this last calendar year, school year. Um, that person had left and we had an interim in place, uh, Mr. Nick Cassidy. And as of today, I would like to congratulate him on becoming Holland Public's new superintendent. Very excited about Mr. Cassidy being the superintendent. I think he has a lot of tools that he brings that will, um, pull everyone together for the common good. There have been some things in the community or in the district that I, I didn't agree with, but nonetheless, I think his leadership is going to, um, bring everyone together. So I'm, I'm, it was just announced just less than an hour ago, so I just wanted to share that. And I'm pretty excited about it. Great guy. We went through some things with my daughter at the middle school and, um, he was a person who was there for us, even extending his personal cell phone number to us to help us work through those things. And, um, you don't see that all the time with, uh, principals. He was a principal at the time. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about that. So, congratulations, Nick.
Great, thank you, Quincy. Yes, Nikki?
I might as well. It's not even eight o'clock yet. So I, um, want to report on the Holland Energy Fund meeting that we, that was held this afternoon, right before this meeting, right before dinner. Um, and I'm excited at the new direction, kind of. It's, uh, it's, I've been on it for two years and it's been something, you know, the Holland Retro Program, which is nice, and some other programs and with, between, among Dan Vorsma, our Sustainability Director or Manager, and, um, Andrew Reynolds from the BPW, and Lynn McCammon. They have, have this, it's, it's organized, uh, that they pivoted a little bit from the direction. Uh, it was in, uh, different, um, standards, different programs offered, different ways of doing it, involving community, uh, organizations like Community Action House. And I'm just pretty excited about this 'cause it's been a mild, a low-level frustration, just this great program that wasn't happening. So, uh, and, uh, Councilman Corbin is on it now and Councilman Peters and who else? You are our manager, of course, and Dave from?
You guys are voting members and Lynn McCammon is the, as a voting member. I, I just get to come to the meetings.
You're ex officio maybe, listener. So it was, uh, it was, it's, we're going in an exciting new direction, so I just wanted to report that.
Great, thank you. Any other, yes, Belinda?
Being, um, March 21st, I wanna let you all know that it is National Rosie Riveter Day. And the original Rosie the Riveter ca, did come from Michigan. And it will be celebrated March 21st. So, um, bring your Rosie Riveter, um, um, memorabilia or wear it. But it just celebrates and raises awareness that 16,000 women who, um, worked during World War, World War, uh, that, yeah, that too. So anyways, uh, being a veteran and being National Our, Our Women's History Month, I just wanna make you all aware of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, item, I just wanna make sure that we're covering what we need to under item 16C. We covered that already in 12E 6.3, correct? Do we need any action there, city attorney?
Uh, the first reading was accepted. That is all that needs to take place.
Okay, just wanna make sure, was in two places on the agenda. I wanna make sure we didn't need to do a, anything second time with that.
Yeah, it's, it's there. If it wasn't accepted, then it shouldn't be there, but that makes sense.
We're, we're good, right? That's, that's the short answer.
Yes, you're good.
All right, great. Thank you, Vince. Um, and then, uh, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to review and discuss strategy related to a collecting, collective bargaining agreement and to review and discuss a written legal opinion with the city attorney. Uh, there may be action that is, that we may need to take following that meeting. Uh, and so if there is such a motion and is voted on, we will go into closed session upstairs. So we'll move in there. We will, I've had requests from a couple of council members for a break in between. So we'll do a short break in between before we go into that closed session. Uh, following the closed session, we will come back down here to take any action that may need to be taken and certainly to adjourn the meeting then at that point. So I would entertain that motion to enter the closed session.
Motion to go into closed session to review and discuss strategy relating to a collective bargain agreement and review and discuss a written legal opinion with the city-
and review and discuss a written legal opinion with the city attorney.
Moved by Byrd, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, Kathy, would you please, oh, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. We will adjourn from here, uh, go upstairs to the training room for closed session. Members of the public are welcome to stay here, uh, if they would like to, uh, for the close of the meeting to see any action that may be taken.